Good evening and welcome. Today is Thursday, October 16th. And this evening, the Rochester Board of Education will be meeting for our Tuesday work session. Excuse me, today is Tuesday, it's not, it's Thursday. We had a day off. It's Thursday, our October 13th, excuse me, 16th work session we'll be having. And at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before we move forward, I'm going to ask for us to entertain a motion for executive session.
Motion.
To discuss, do we have to?
I'm looking for the language. This meeting may recess in executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. And to receive the advice of the general counsel as permitted by Section 105 of the Open Meetings Law. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Patterson. May I have a second by Vice President Malloy? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will dismiss into executive session at this time. Thank you for your patience. We are returning from executive session to our board work session for the Rochester City School District this evening. At this time, I'd like to bring forward our partners, who are the Council for Great City Schools, Dr. Ray Hart and Cindy. Cindy, give me your last name again. Ellsburn. I was gonna add some syllables there. Ellsburn, thank you for joining us this evening. We've been working with the Council for Great City Schools on student outcomes-focused governance. This work continues. And I'm gonna turn the mic over this evening for your facilitation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Simmons, Commissioners, Superintendent Rossiter. Thank you all for having us again. And we look forward to having a conversation tonight. We're gonna do two things tonight. The first of which is, at our last session with the board, we had the board draft guardrails to round out the goals that the board has already set. In the interim between our last session and this session, we've been working with the administration to think through what might be possible measures, which we call interim guardrails for the goals and the guardrails that you've set. We'll also work with the administration on setting up interim goals as we move forward. But we'll have a conversation about that later. Before we get to that conversation, you all requested from us the opportunity to hear from board members around the country who have been through this process before, to get a perspective of what it's like, where you're going, what it has looked like for them. And so we are going to share, we've asked two board members to join us via Zoom to share with you their perspective of what the processes look like, what is meant for their school district, and then answer any questions that you might have about where you're going, what the process looks like, et cetera. Before they join, I'd like to share a presentation that was just presented. One of the board members is from Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools. And this was, this presentation was shared just a few days ago, actually, about Charlotte Mecklenburg's results from this year's state assessment results. And you'll also see some other things in there about their goals, what their processes are. So I wanted to share that with you as a bit of background before you actually hear from the Commissioners. I'll also share some information, it hasn't been publicly shared yet, about Philadelphia, but I'll share some information about Philadelphia. And then we'll introduce those two board members to you. So beginning, as I shared earlier, this is a presentation that was most recently done in Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools. You'll be hearing from Dee Rankin, who is the school board member on your, to your right in the picture, with the gray beard that you can't miss. And so he'll be joining us shortly. The first thing I'd like to note is, and I'm gonna skip this slide, which talks about their enrollment, their background. But I'm gonna go straight to this slide, which actually, so you'll notice the third slide in the board's presentation is actually the board's monitoring report and what we call monitoring calendar for the year. Remember, we mentioned to you that one of the things that you'll wanna focus on at each meeting is how are students actually doing? What are student outcomes? And what's the district doing from a strategy perspective to improve student outcomes and student achievement in the district? What you see in this monitoring calendar are their four goals. One is K-12 literacy. One is three through eight literacy. They have a math one goal. Then they have a post-secondary readiness goal. And I'm pulling this directly from them. So I know you can't see the monitoring calendar. But what you'll note from this particular monitoring calendar is that throughout the course of the year, on your left, you have August 2025, September 2025 is the next column over, October 2025 is the third, November, December, January. So for now through January, what they've laid out is here are our four goals that the board has established. And here's when those goals will be monitored, either the goal itself or an interim goal, and as well as their guardrails. And here are some of the initial results. What they've noted as a part of the process that they've gone through in setting those student outcome goals for kids this year, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools outperformed the state of North Carolina in overall grade level proficiency. And they grew in reading grades three through eight, 5.2 percentage points. I'll put that in context in a moment. They grew in math three through eight, 4.6 percentage points. And they grew in math three, 8.2 percentage points. In addition to that, 156 of their schools met or exceeded growth. And that was a total of 89% of their schools, the first time in their history that they've had that number of schools meet or exceed growth. So it's the first time it's ever happened in Charlotte Mecklenburg. In addition to that, 115 of those schools exceeded growth. And this is exceeded growth, and it was these two percentages. So the first one was met or exceeded. This one is exceeded growth. So 115 of their schools, 65% exceeded growth expectations for the year. Again, first time in the history of the district. 10 is the ranking of the district out of schools. Again, that is the highest ranking for the school district in its history, relative to other school districts in the state. 123 of the schools increased from, increased to A, B, or C. Again, the largest single-year increase in the history of the schools. So 123 schools are about 70% of their schools earn an A, B, or C. And then 55% of their schools improved, again by letter grade, largest single increase in the history of the district. I'll skip through most of these, just in the interest of time. But I'll share just a couple of others. Mentioned earlier that they were up 5.2%. Again, that's their reading goal. The other thing that you can see here is by each grade level, how reading has improved. So it's not just, and this is one of the important things about setting goals, even though they set kind of broad goals, those broad goals have resulted in improvements at multiple grade levels. So 79.3% of students demonstrated proficiency through a state's Read to Achieve program. In addition to that, in mathematics, you'll also see similarly across grade levels, even though they set math goals at specific places, what the district, and what we wanted to share here is that what the district recognizes is that in order to hit those goals, if I set an eighth grade goal or what have you, what I recognize is I've gotta improve at each grade level to accomplish that. And so that's one of the things you see reflected here. 66.6% is the grade level proficiency rate for those students who are level three, four, or five on high school math three, which was one of their goals. So just a broad overview of where the district has gone, how the district has improved. There's one other slide that I'll show you. That's a picture of all of their schools. But there's one other slide, I think that's important to note. This is about the number of schools that were A, B, C, or D. But I'll share this in a little different way relative to the DNF schools and the A, B, and C schools. And that is on this particular slide. I know you can't see it well. But going back to, on the left-hand side, what you have is the 21-22 school year. And what you have going across is the number of A schools in the district is that first column. And then the percentage of A schools in the district is the second column. The number of B schools in the district is the third column. The number of C schools outlined in purple is the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth column over. And then you've got the number of D and F schools in the last two purple highlighted columns. Of note, since the 21-22 school year, they have had an additional nine schools reach the A level. They've had an additional four schools reach B. They've had additional eight schools reach C status. They've dropped the number of D schools by 11, and they've dropped the number of F schools by nine. So it gives you a picture of, you know, what happens when you, as a board, set goals, when you begin to then monitor those goals and then move the administration in a direction of actually improving. The last thing is the number of F schools that they have in the district has gone from 27 F schools to six in this school year. So one of the things that we'll continue to focus on as we work with you, as we work with the setting of not only goals, but interim goals, interim guardrails, putting the guardrails in place, is really moving the needle on student achievement. That will always be our focus. The other thing that I'll share with you, and I won't take the time out to do it in a PowerPoint slide, but I just wanna share with you some context for Philadelphia public schools, who will join us as well. And the Philadelphia public schools this year has set a number of goals around literacy and mathematics, as was shared earlier. But in Philadelphia this year, relative to the 21-22 school year, they are up in mathematics, 8.6 percentage points. And Philadelphia is a school district that has struggled historically, academically, but these are the percentage of kids who are proficient or advanced is up. For third-grade students in particular, who are proficient or advanced on the state test, they increased 12.9 percentage points in that category over their 21-22 school year. In addition to that, in terms of percentage of students with regular attendance, their attendance is up, 4.1 percentage points. They have some other key areas, critical areas, relative to teacher attendance in particular. Teacher attendance, 90, and they measure that by 90% or more of days attended. That has increased 8.2 percentage points. And then the number of student dropouts, which is important, and they measure this in grade seven through 12, but the number of student dropouts in grade seven through 12 has decreased by 2,237 students. So they have 2,237 fewer dropouts now than they did in the 21-22 school year. It was 3,917 that year. It has dropped to 1,680. And then the percentage of students, as I mentioned earlier, who scored proficient or advanced on Algebra I and Biology and some of their high school measures, up 1.4 percentage points, up 2.2 percentage points. And then their competent or advanced on another state test. It looks at kind of how students are doing relative to a college and career measure is up 15.7 percentage points. So didn't wanna introduce the individuals who are going to join us without giving you some background about the actual performance of those school districts, what it's looked like, how it's changed, and what the parameters of setting these types of goals and guardrails means for improvement in student outcomes in your district. And so Cindy, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so the only other thing that I'd add, I don't think it was mentioned, that the other board member that we have that will be joining us is from Dallas. And that is Ben Mackey. And Dallas is, has been doing this work for quite a number of years, since 2015. They actually, in Texas, student outcomes-focused governance is known as Lone Star Governance. And it, a lot of the same tenants. And they too have seen numerous gains in their student data as well. And this, this is just, and what you'll hear, and you'll have an opportunity likely to ask these folks questions as well once they've talked a little bit about their governance journeys. But a lot of that, a lot of what it's about is having those priorities and then aligning resources. So when we talk about aligning resources, it is time, talent, and treasure. So when we, and that's both time, talent, and treasure of the district, and time, talent, and treasure as a, as time currency of the board. So, and how the board spends its time really, really matters. And that's why we focus toward that 50%. How the board allows the district to spend its time also matters. So anything that the board or board members do to take the eye off of that ball, off of that student outcomes ball, is not going to, is gonna take away, there's always a trade-off, take away from the chances of your students getting to have the benefit of such results as well. So just a little context there. Do we have, is Dee back with us? Oh, Ben's here, okay. Hi, Ben.
Hello, y'all. Great to be here.
We'll go ahead and introduce, we'll start with Ben, but we have three others. We asked them to join at 6:30, so they should be joining in about two minutes. So Dee, and Dee Brown was, Dee was with, Dee Rankin, excuse me, was, Dee Brown was a basketball player. Now I'm dating myself. Dee Rankin was with us just a few minutes ago, so he'll join. I'll allow Ben to introduce himself. But I didn't share any data from Dallas ISD. But I'll share with you that a couple of things that were really, and Ben can share some more details about their student achievement outcomes as a relative to setting their goals and guardrails process. But one of the first things about Dallas that was notable is their goals really focus on, again, improving student outcomes coming out of the pandemic. Their African-American students in Dallas were the first, and it was well before the state and well before other student groups, to exceed their performance coming out of the pandemic relative to where they were pre-pandemic. And it was almost immediate. And so when you look at kind of student achievement, setting goals, things like that, Ben will give you more details on what they've done and how they focused. But just understanding that that makes a difference for your kids. So Ben, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Well, Dr. Hart, if I can interrupt, I apologize for interrupting. Is there a way we can cast, so we can see Ben and everyone on the bigger screen? And once he starts talking, he'll show on the other screens? Okay, thank you. Pardon my interruption.
So Ben, I'll let you introduce yourself. And thank you for joining us. And thank you for sharing with the board here in Rochester about your experience with setting, we know that you have Lone Star Governance in Texas, but it mirrors student outcomes-focused governance and what it's meant for your district.
Absolutely. It's an honor to be with you all here tonight. My name's Ben Mackey. I am a school board member in Dallas ISD. I've been on the board for the last six years. Though the work that Dallas ISD started along the student outcomes-focused governance direction actually preceded my time on the board. They actually started They actually started about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Um, and we've been doing the work for the better part of the last decade. Uh, so I'll talk a little bit about that, but separately in my um, professional life, I also am an educator. I have actually been an assistant superintendent in a district that went from not really having a governance framework to adopting essentially, again, SOFG. Um, although we in Texas call it Lone Star Governance, but it is essentially and functionally the same thing. Um, and I got to see the difference from the administrative perspective as well. So I'll talk briefly about that. But at the highest level, um, and when I came to Dallas ISD, I was actually a principal in the district. So I watched a lot of school board meetings, and I watched them go until two AM in the morning, talking about all kinds of number of things. Usually procurement contracts, uh, technology, uh, policies, uh, any other number of things that might be the topic of the day. And again, the board and all the board members really wanted the best, and they were engaging on these topics that some of which had real concerns to them or ways to do it. But what was lost in that was what is the most important thing? And then how do we make sure our actions speak louder than our words? We can say what we say is important. We can say that we want to improve student outcomes or make sure every student can read on level. Um, but in twenty fifteen, the board actually sat down, spent, I think the better part of, Ray, you might have been there for a part of it. Um, spent the better part of three weekends really crafting out what the goals were going to be for that first one. We are now in the third iteration of student outcome goals that square solely on student outcomes. In Dallas, we've chosen to essentially have a benchmark achievement level on um, third grade reading, third grade math. Eighth grade reading, eighth grade math, and college and career rating aspired, particular set of metrics that we have used. And it's been more or less, while it has changed over time, um, they have been relatively consistent in that. What I will say is it's one thing to set the goals and set the priorities. It is a wholly different thing to spend substantial time focusing on them. Uh, in about twenty twenty, we actually implemented where we do monthly monitoring. And I truly believe that that has fundamentally changed our trajectory in the school system, and the data bears it out. So as of this past year, we actually, um, Ray alluded to this. I don't have the data in front of me, but I will make sure you all have the data from this. Um, but essentially, we went from a place where about, you know, we had a lot of schools that were D or F schools. We have an A three F system in Texas. Um, to this year, we only have fourteen out of well over two hundred campuses that are D or F. We are the highest achieving, um, or at least one of the very highest achieving large urban districts in the state of Texas. And nationally, when you look at some of the other metrics that translate across state lines. Um, we outperform our state in absolute achievement. Um, for all of the, so for our Hispanic students, our African-American students, economically disadvantaged students, and emergent bilingual students. We are outperforming at every single performance level, and I attribute that squarely to the fact that the board spends every, time every month focusing on that. Where that fades in is there's a whole lot of other systems that come from it. It's not just about setting the goals and just spending time to spend time on it. It is actually though, where a board focuses their time, administration then has permission to spend their time there as well. And if they know the board is going to ask questions about things, is going to really dig in deep on third grade reading. You better believe that administration is going to spend time in the preceding weeks and months, making sure they are ready to talk about all of the ins and outs of third grade reading. And there's a safety and a trust there because administration also commiserate with this, then doesn't get blindsided by whatever else is there. There's other procedures to talk about and get questions answered around procurement or uh, different construction elements, which board members still need to know about, and there still needs to be a conversation. But the board doesn't dedicate nearly as much time to that at the board meeting that gets handled outside of it. So fundamentally, and I could tell you this is my last anecdote, and then I will stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions or be a resource however I can. I was the assistant superintendent overseeing a lot of the data elements and of large streams of our student support services work in a district that I worked in that adopted this model. And I will never forget, there was, after the midterm assessments, I was in charge of actually putting together and the data packets. That would help guide our reading and our math strategies for principals across the district. Our board at the time had a major concern about something procurement related, as it related to special education from a few years ago. And that was the question that came up, and we knew that that was going to be the topic at the board meeting. And so you better believe that I ended up spending my time trying to figure out everything I could know about that procurement system that happened a few years ago. Again, not because the board members are trying to distract us, but that was just the topic at the moment. There wasn't a structure to keep the focus on third grade reading, on third grade reading. And I often reflect on my own actions at time and, and the damage that I caused by not being able to put those reports together and not putting those reports together for the district. Because I was too busy spending my time choosing to figure out about this procurement issue. In the intervening year, the district adopted goals, and they chose one priority goal, third grade reading that we focused on. And so you better believe that next year around, there was nothing that would distract us from getting those third grade reading reports out to principals. And I am proud that when, by the time I left, even with the pandemic, our district emerged actually reading at every grade level higher than pre-pandemic levels uh, by twenty twenty-three. So a huge um, turnaround there, especially in the face of a pandemic. But I would attribute that almost squarely to the focus the board put on the system and saying, our students are going to read, and we are going to be ruthless about asking questions about that. And we're going to align this so the superintendent feels uh, supported in focusing their time and staff attention on these priorities that we have set. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Just thankful to be here. Thank you for choosing to serve and do the work that you do. Um, I know that it is a lot of time for very little, often no pay whatsoever. And so thank you for um, serving your community, your students, the way you do.
Uh, thank you, Ben. Before we open the floor to questions for you, uh, we'll go ahead and introduce uh, Dee. Uh, and Dee Rankin is a board member from um, Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools. And Dee, uh, you missed the presentation that I just shared, uh, but I just shared your twenty-four, twenty-five end-of-year student achievement results. Presentation that was just shared with the board, uh, so I just shared that with the board here. Uh, but feel free to take a moment, um, if you will, to just share a little bit about your perspective um, to the Charlotte, to Charlotte. Uh, to the Rochester uh, City School District Board um, of commissioners on what the, this process has meant for you, your district. Uh, and your board overall. And feel free to introduce yourself as well.
Sure. Thanks, Ray. I appreciate it. Um, my name is Dee Rankin. I'm currently serving uh, on the Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board of Education. Uh, I am also service vice chair of the board. I've been on the board. This is my first term. I'm up for reelection for this, for this term, um, unopposed. Um, so I'll be on the board another four years for my second term. I'm also served as the policy chair. Uh, I've been through uh, the coaching cohort um, for the, through the Council of Great City Schools. Um, and when it comes to the SOFG uh, framework, uh, before I joined the board, um, I, I, our board. Um, started this process, create goals and guardrails. They started this process, I think, maybe two years or three years before I, I joined. Um, and then when we joined, we set a new set of goals, which we are currently in now. Uh, a new set of goals focused around early, early literacy, um, K two literacy, uh, three, eight literacy, uh, math one. And then a college and career um, goal as well. We did that through a process of one, receiving uh, feedback from our community, finding out what their vision and values were. When their values were, and then from there we um, uh, created our goals. Uh, so that our, this is our first year, and I don't know if you saw, I'm, I'm sure you saw the data, but we had really historic gains uh, through this process. Um, in the meantime, also, we also, between the two uh, creating new goals, we also hired a new superintendent. And with that new superintendent, uh, we did, we had these goals, and we, it's really, as a board, has kept us focused. Um, on really making sure our meetings are, I would say, more intentional. Uh, each meeting, we have a progress monitoring session each meeting. Um, and we are really focused on making sure that we just not focus on more operational. Um, conversation, but really focused around strategies and learning from the superintendent, when she did give, after she gives her presentation. On how we can continue to move forward um, to achieve our goals. Um, and I think we're, we're super proud of what we, what we've accomplished this first year, and hopefully we'll continue to move forward. Um, and hopefully by twenty twenty-nine, we'll, we'll accomplish our goal.
Uh, and Joyce, um, uh, who is from Philadelphia will join us in a moment, so we'll introduce her when she joins. In the meantime, I don't know if we can get Ben and Dee on the screen together, but want to open up the floor to uh, commissioners here in the room. Uh, to ask any questions that you might have about uh, your colleagues from Charlotte and Dallas.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. I think I'll start, if, if that's okay. Hi, my name is Camille Simmons. I serve as the president for the school board here. I've been on the board for, um, I'm completing my first term, and then I'll be going on to my second term soon. Um, you all mentioned, um, what I think a lot of boards deal with, which is wanting to focus on the work, but not necessarily focusing on the work. Uh, like you said, there's a lot of different pieces that drive a school system, but they don't necessarily drive governance. So the behaviors that you begin to recognize that needed to change to will you back in to focus on the student outcomes. Um, can you share a little bit around how you all held each other accountable or supported each other in kind of refocusing toward um, the recognition that we've got to focus on student outcomes?
Yeah, I'll be happy to go first. Um, and I think it, you, you hit the nail on the head. Board member, every board member that I've ever met, met really wants to do right by the students and the families of their school systems. And it's not about board members necessarily, so much as it's about board systems. And so putting in place and really having these conversations about how do we put the systems in place to keep our board as a collective focused on this. Um, and so what that looked like in Dallas, we actually set board operating procedures around what types of reports come to the board members at board meetings. We tried to center that around the student outcomes themselves and put a calendar for it. And then where do the other reports go? Um, it doesn't mean board members never get updated on these things. That's not the point. There's just other modes of information to be able to get that. So it really is around thinking about your procedures, really interrogating, why do we do things the way we do things? And is there a better way to do them? Uh, is there a better way? And I, you know, oftentimes this gets lost, is I, what I hear is the first response around SOFG sometimes is like, well, this is where we talk about things that our public sees what's happening. And so we need to continue to spend a lot of time at our meetings talking about them. And my point is, is there are some people that watch your meetings, but your wider public does not. And there are often way better ways to communicate what you want to communicate about items to your wider community than simply talking about it at a board meeting. What a board meeting does is center your priorities. And so it's really about building the systems that align for that. How do we consider policies? How do things get put on the agenda? What does our calendar look like? That help us center around those priorities and help us achieve what we want as opposed to answering whatever is the topic of the moment.
And um, just following behind Ben, I would just say that we too um, have a, a board operate, operating procedures manual that we follow. Um, that give, that of course talks about how many days ahead of time that we have our agenda set and uh, the items that go on our agenda. But our, our, our board chair also takes the time to do a timed agenda to make sure that what we're doing, what we're focused on is um. The work or the, the actual student outcomes focused work, um, and not more so the operational pieces. There are some reports that we have to, or things on the agenda we have to do just because legally we have to do certain things. But for the most part, uh, we do, I, I feel we do a good job of uh, making sure the items that are on our agenda are necessary. And the reports that come before our, before us are necessary. Um, some reports um, can be, well, in our, in our, we call them as presented reports. And the board members get the reports before the board, board meeting, I mean, eleven days before. Then, then we have, we have the opportunity to provide questions on those reports that won't be presented to the board, to the superintendent. By, within seven days, and they get, they receive that, give us the answers within five. And we follow that procedure um, to, in those, and you have, ask as many questions as you want, how many, and that's fine. But then, of course, you can have your one-on-one time with the superintendent or her cabinet. But tho, that's how we kind of keep our agenda tight and make sure we're focusing on our progress monitoring.
Thank you. Facilitate this part? I can. Um, okay, yeah, so we'll open it here on the dais then. Uh, Vice President Malloy, I believe you had a question, spending?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both for being here and for your insight. I know I've done um, two years of the Council of Great City Schools just as part of a cohort. I've learned a lot, but implementing things, it's a lot different than just being part of a cohort. Um, and so I'm really excited to see us adopt this here in Rochester. Um, I know oper, it's really easy to get involved in the operational parts of our district um, and get bogged down in that. But is there anything, I don't know if you've ever had truly like emergencies in your districts that you've had to deal with as a board? Um, and how do you balance those district-wide operational emergencies that might occur? How has the board been able to stay, or your board's been able to stay student outcomes focused during those times? Because these are often very pressing issues that have real impacts on employees and children. Um, have you had to deal with those types of crises?
When, when you say emergencies, um, I'm just curious what, I, in particular examples, because most of the time if there's emergencies, unless there's something that we have to vote on. Or requires us to do a vote, I don't know, I'm not sure that we were, it will require us to address anything during a board meeting, unless it's something. Um, pressing to where that the superintendent can't handle. But for the most part, if it's something that we, we don't have to require us to vote on, I'm not sure if there's any couple, a couple of emergencies that we would have to handle during a board meeting. Um, and I will say this too, I meant to mention this earlier. We, it is great to have the majority of our, our board, um, I would say almost a hundred percent, but, but nothing's always, always perfect. But it's bought into the, into this framework. And like, we have, we have several that's gone through the cohort. Of course, we've done, we have, of course, we have a coach. We've had several different workshops and um, focusing on our different mindset practices, no different things. And I think that's the key to make sure we have a board that's really bought in and focused on the framework. And that was, that, that's key um, to, to, to uh, staying focused and being intentional on how we have our meetings and what we're doing.
Thank you.
I would add that there's not a, you know, I think this is a common misperception about SOFG is like, don't focus on any operations. Inevitably, you're going to have to. That's part of your job. There's those things that come up. I think what the heart of SOFG is, is that you, if you say something's your priority, you prioritize it with your time. Uh, that doesn't mean you spend a hundred percent of your time on that. In fact, the SOFG framework really only talks about that the highest level being half of your time, which leaves another half of your time to deal with all the operational priorities. The heart of it is just that you are being really intentional about not spending all of your time on those operational priorities. And then to add on to Dee's comment, I think it has given us a framework in how we talk about these things. So it's not just trying to make a decision about, in a vacuum, about this operational decision. It has given us a new language to say, okay, we need to make this operational decision. There's a couple of options on the table. Superintendent, which of these is going to help get us closer to achieving our goals and living out our values, uh, and which ones wouldn't, and why? It gives us a framework to talk about those. But it's definitely not the case that it, you never talk about those things because that's part of your role too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do you have another question?
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Santiago?
I do not have a question, but I just wanted to thank you guys uh, for taking time out of your uh, busy schedules to be here and give this presentation. I think everything that you guys have shared has been uh, pretty clear so far. So no questions, but just want to say thank you guys uh, for coming here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I don't know if this is a question for you or CGCS. Um, but I'd like you to talk about um, you know, publicly televised meetings. Uh, we have a number, numerous publicly televised meetings. Um, and I'd like you to speak relative to uh, the percentage, you know, that you have, like, how many a week, how many a month? What's your thoughts on that? Um, you know, does it detract from um, progress? Uh, or do you think every meeting should be televised to the public?
I can go first. So we have seen a drastic decrease in the number of meetings that we have. We used to be having weekly meetings about any number of topics that come up, and it was hard to follow. Um, actually, putting a cadence together about when we meet and why we meet and what we accomplish during that. Even though there might be still some other things that come up out of nowhere, but it kind of gives a framework, has allowed us to focus and understand that everything that's urgent is not important. But we, it allows us to prioritize the urgent. allows us to prioritize the urgent things. As far as the televised meetings, I think this is a, you know, oftentimes this is governed by state law. So in Texas, we definitely have to record and share our meetings and that's got to be available publicly, which we do. We don't publicly televise them though they are live streamed. You can watch them on YouTube or wherever else. The, I would just say is, I would just ask, I think part of the SOFG process is to ask a board about why we do things the way we do them and really understand how it helps us get closer to achieving our goals or not, and then making a decision in that consideration. So in this instance, like I would inquire about, you know, why? First of all, do we have to? Is it legally required? Why would we do that? What was the purpose that it was started for? Sometimes it is, we want to communicate to the community. That's probably a good thing, but I would just encourage a board in that instance is how wide of a reach is it? How many people watch it? And is there a better way to communicate the message to your wider constituency? But I think those are questions that only you can answer. I don't think there's one right answer. But I think some of the work of SOFG is to really interrogate these practices that have always been in, in, in practice, just because they've been there, and really think about how this is helping get us closer or further from our priorities.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say that here in North Carolina also, we're the same where all of our meetings are televised, whether they're live streamed, but we also, our meetings, that's anything that's, any of our public meetings, whether it's a committee meeting, whether it's a board working meeting, they are, they're all live streamed. Or they are on our local cable station here also, that also shows our meetings. So we have to have that option. And I would also say, something that's been beneficial to us as well, when I first got on the board, we had maybe, I would say, six to eight committees, which was working against our time, our board time, our SOFG time. And in our last retreat over the years, we've taken the time to do committee diets, because what we were finding out was a lot of the, the committee meetings that we, we were having was really more so just the staff, our staff reporting out to us the work that they've been doing. It's not really the work that the board had been doing. So we've had, we've been intentional with a committee diet. And we also taken the time to, like I said, cut committees, but also we, in our, we've also created policy around the, the amount of meetings certain committees can have throughout the year. So certain committees can only meet, can only meet, say, four times a year, which would give them once a quarter. But that's, and that's it. And some can meet up to six times. I think we only, and we only have, I think right now we have to three, we're down to three committees, if I'm not mistaken. And that's it. And then we have our regular board meetings. So we meet twice a month. And then there may be a committee meeting in between some of those, depending on if they meet or not.
And last, the timed agenda you mentioned, which I agree with, and I think is very important. Could you explain that to the listening public? I have an idea what you're talking about, but if you could explain that a little bit more in depth?
Sure. So once the agenda, once our, our, our chair and our superintendent come up with the agenda items, then the chair allocates a certain amount of time for each item. So we'll, so we'll have an idea of how much time we'll spend on each particular section. And so we'll know, you know, if it's a report out on, you know, any particular item, it would say 10 minutes here. And then for pro, for our progress marketing session, we know those are a little longer. So we may go, say, 45 minutes or so to an hour, depending on, on the, on the topic. And so each item is given a time. So we'll have a guesstimate on how long the meeting will be, number one, and how long, how much time we'll spend on that particular agenda item. And the only thing that we don't really, we can somewhat gauge is we, here we are, we're required by law to provide public comment. And that's, that's not something that we limit to where each, each speaker gets two minutes. And we don't know until 12:00 PM, the day of the meeting, how many people, that's when the cutoff is to sign up to speak. So then we'll have, we'll, by the, by the meeting time, we'll have an idea of how long public comments will be. And we only have public comments once a month at the beginning of the month.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on one second, Commissioner Elliott.
I just want to thank him.
Did you have, I'm sorry, did you have one more?
I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, go ahead and thank them.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. I have one more question to my left, and then Commissioner Elliott, I do see your hand. Okay, Commissioner Elliott?
So the drawback for me is, is that without having the meetings that we used to have as a board, while they were long at times and pretty frequent, it did provide me with information that I can articulate in the community. I don't feel that I had that kind of intimate information at this point. And so for me, it feels as if I cannot communicate to the community, you know, around a lot of different issues, because we had the subject matter experts that would come in to be able, we can, you know, ask questions and they can respond. So I missed that piece. I understand why we may want to reduce the meetings that we made that decision to do that, but I'm feeling lost. I'll just say that. And so how did you all handle moving from your original schedule of meetings to still feeling that you know what's going on in your school district?
I can take that first. So, and I believe in Dallas, how we do this is, board members need access to all the information that they need to be able to make effective decisions and share with their community. So that can't go away if you're going to have board members who can actually advocate for things and share this. So I empathize with your feeling the need for that. What we did is found better venues for that. So a setup where we can ask questions well in advance, because what fundamentally was happening is that we weren't getting comprehensive answers at the meetings, because it's the first time that the staff is hearing those questions. They're saying, we might have to get back to you on that. They're trying to grapple with this. So when we found, when we actually went to, how do I ask questions or set up these individual meetings where I can get the answers I need based on this? There's other ways to do this that have gotten me a lot of information. It's still coming on me to ask the questions. Just now there are more venues and more effective venues where I can get those answers that aren't at a public meeting when we've got a bunch of other agenda items on the agenda to get through. And so that has saved the staff a ton of time. That has saved me a ton of time. And it has allowed me to get better and more responsive information in a more timely fashion than in a slew of other agenda items. But I empathize with the need. You definitely need information. And I think that's part of the SOFG framework is not to say board members shouldn't have that information. It is, how do we find the most effective ways to get board members the information? And then also, how do we support the board as a collective and actually communicating that more effectively with the community?
For me, it had a lot to do with being able to ask the questions in public for the people that put us in office. So to put that in the public space, to be able to ask those questions. We do have ways in which that we can get that information, but for, yeah, at least for me, having those conversations public like that, and for the people that viewed this and who was going to share this information throughout the community, I just found it to be far more.
I got you. I thought you were talking about you, you found value asking the questions at the meeting. But really what I heard you, hear you say now is actually the community who watches us is able to hear that conversation, which is, so.
Well, both, yeah, both.
Slightly on that, which is I've seen boards find a lot more far-reaching ways to get this. I've seen boards actually, they ask those questions in advance. Administration can put together a really meaningful one. They put together a YouTube video that then gets sent out and is available on all the feeds that people can watch and actually learn about that and see the discussion if they're interested in that particular item and can send it rather than have to go through a meeting. I've seen it communicated in newsletters. I have seen a lot of different ways to get that information out to the community. And when we looked at our, who watched our meetings in both of the systems that I have worked in, yes, there are a few community members, but for the size of Dallas, it is mostly a number of staff and the same three to four people that are deeply interested. And so we found we can actually get a lot wider information out to parts of our community that don't typically tune into the board meeting and actually get that meaningful information in their hand by using other means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like, also like to add also, we have, we have a, we've created, like I said, 11 days before, we're able to ask the questions. We received all the agenda items and all the reports. Everything that will be on the meeting will be, was, is sent to us. We have the opportunity to ask multiple, any question that we want about the reports or about the items that will be, that will be on the agenda, whether they're, they're actual reports or where they'll be as presented. I mean, they don't mean they'll be presented to us, but there'll be a gen, agenda item as presented. Any questions that the board members ask, they are also posted on the agenda the day of. So community members can also see the, the, the questions that board members ask and also the responses that the district staff has given us. So that's also posted on our public site, along with any presentations, any reports and information. So we, that's how we get, anyone that's watching our meeting will have those responses that happened prior to, if there's not an official report or dialogue between staff. But they will also see the questions that we've asked but prior to the meeting before, since it won't be presented actually at the meeting. And we present those on our site.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so, and this is reassuring to hear because we see that there's a lot of things that we are moving in the right direction. It's reinforcing some of those pieces. And then we're also hearing some tidbits that we can potentially adopt or consider for even our own board. I want to be cognizant of the time. I think I see two more hands and then we'll try to close it and send it back to CGCS if that's okay, Dr. Hart. I'm going to start with Vice President Malloy and then Commissioner Griffin. I saw your hand.
And just so you know, I think Ben Mackey has to jump. So Dee, you might be on your own for just a second.
But you're in good hands with Dee. I got to jump to my own board meeting. We have ours starting right now.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Cindy and Ray both have my contact information. They can share it directly with all of you. If you want to talk more offline, I'd be happy to. But you're in great hands with Dee also.
Thank you.
Did you want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So the question I have is just about the board's self-evaluation process. What impact or changes have you observed in that process in your time on the board?
With the board self-evaluation, I think we've been very, it's made us really reevaluate one, our time. And if you, if you're, if you're familiar with the board self-evaluation, really the, the first three, the vision and the values and those two, the first two, we really have been intentional with making sure we are progressing and have continuous improvement. So it's really made us, excuse me, take a look at how we operate as a board and we hold each other accountable to those measures in the self-evaluation.
And do you have full participation in that self-evaluation process?
For the most part, I would say for the majority of time, we do have everyone, I'm trying to think of the last two or three that we've done, yes. And of course, the board, we also have, we actually do the actual self-evaluation in one of our board meetings. So we review it together so, so everyone can discuss that in a, in a public meeting. So that's, it's the, the responses and what everyone scores individually. And we kind of talk through and work through that. But we also have our coach there as well, kind of talking us through the process to get us to where we need to be.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to call on Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Vice President Malloy. I know I missed a lot of the conversation, but I kind of am going to come in to where I feel is most feasible at this time and say that I have to agree, one, with Commissioner Elliott in, in being kind of not having the insight that we did prior to all these changes and the lack thereof of communication with, as a commissioner from administration in dealing with areas of concern. Also would say that with the, with the removal of the committees, I find that there's a lot of information that we, we now do not have oversight on. And it's causing a problem, I feel, because it's not being communicated in a way that it should, should be. With the changes that you have made in your district, how did you overcome those things? And like I said, you may have answered this question, but I, I feel kind of like less thereof, having the autonomy to address the issues and concerns that are in this district, because I don't know what's going on. It's like, we don't know what's going on. It's like, people are talking and speaking in silos and I don't, I don't have the information I need to address certain things or to have insight to make a sound decision.
So if you specifically are talking about committees, I can give you an example, like some of the, some of the committees, how we did our diet. At one point, we had an audit committee. And the audit committee would meet and talk about the particular, the, the staff would come and tell us results of the audit. And we decided that it was really more, taking more of staff's time, because there was no board work, there was nothing the, the board needed to do when it came to have an actual official committee meeting about the audit. So that's one of the, that was one that we took away. But that, the audit still occurs. We received the information, but it's just not as a committee. We received the audit information. We have the opportunity to ask questions to staff. We received those questions. And then, like I said, if, if the information is, is as presented, it's, it's posted on our website, on our agenda, the responses to the questions. So we still able to receive the information that as needed when it comes to, say, a capital bond, a bond. We had a community capital bond committee, which once again was the staff coming and presenting to us where we are with our bond, taking up more staff time versus, the staff would provide us with a report, would have an opportunity to, to ask questions about that report and receive responses back from as, as much as we needed to from staff. And so that, that's been very beneficial to us. Like, so the, the main committees that we have right now are, we have our policy committee. Of course, we need policy because that's one of the main things that we create. We have our, our finance and operational committee. And then we have one more, if we, we have one more. But we, we'll still have the opportunity to receive the information, ask questions. It took an adjustment for some board members, but I think after, after you get used to the cadence of being to ask questions, because we always have access to district, at any time, we could ask questions about what, what's necessary. So that we can be informed to our, to present to our community. And we have a fairly, fairly large district. So, and it's been working pretty well.
I just have to say that you say policy. Policy committee is a very big concern, as is ESA. And in New York State Audit, the Audit Committee is kind of mandatory. So those are the three areas I think primarily is a big concern. But I have to say that across the board, when I look at other branches in, in our, in our city, they all have an oversight. A member of the, of the board has an oversight over something. So they know that everything is going correctly, or they can, they can relate and say, hey, this is what's going on and relate back to the board. So I feel that in some ways, and I'm not taking anything away from the Council of Great City Schools, but some things I feel because of the dynamics of, of, of the board and how the history has, has played out, that things are still, it, it takes time to, for, for things to get better. But I still feel that it, it's some things we need to have to ensure that this district is going to be run smoothly. And some of these committees that were taken away should not have been taken away so abruptly and, and without having something in place to build upon so that we can have a clear understanding of what's going on. So I think that that's where we lose a lot, because we don't have that oversight as we did before. Other committees, I understand, but certain committees I felt, I feel should, still should be in play at this time. Thank you though.
Thank you.
I appreciate your response.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to end the questions. We're at 7:09 mark. But I want to definitely thank our guests for joining us this evening and answering so many questions as we continue this journey with CGCS. And I'm going to turn the mic back over to you, Dr. Hart.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Dee. Thank you for joining us, Dee Rankin, and as well as Ben Mackey. And just let you know, let you all know that Joyce was not able to join us this evening because she's also in a board meeting. So they all have joined us around their own board meetings as they were able to. So Dee, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Okay. Okay. It's very interesting. Thank you again for presenting us with some testimonials and seeing how the work can actually manifest as we continue this journey. It looks like the next item on the agenda is going into the guardrail conversation.
Yes. So, I believe what you have attached to the agenda are some, are the guardrails, and then some of the draft interim guardrails that Dr. Rasser and staff have been working, working on. So, I believe right now it's an opportunity for, if you're prepared, Dr. Rasser and staff, to talk a little bit about some of the thinking that you're putting in, that you've put into these concepts, into these interim guardrails so that the board can understand how you're essentially interpreting what they've, how they've expressed the values of the community. And just a reminder to the board, if, if it's such that the superintendent's interim guardrails aren't necessarily the direction that you were thinking with your guardrail, it's not about their needing to go back and come up with ones that you like. It's more, how do we rewrite this to express it in a way that our intent is more understood?
Before we do so, can we, can you spend a little time with sharing with the board the process by which we ended our last session with draft guardrails? And then, of course, there was some work that was done by the council to wordsmith?
Yeah.
So, can you talk a little bit about that before we get into?
Sure. So, if you recall, the last time we were here, we went through that process of, of, you know, first you worked individually, then in pairs, and then in, in groups. And we had the, the chart paper, and you voted, and what rose to the top. And there was a, a little bit of combining of some of the guardrails that occurred. And as we left that evening, we talked about that there would, that we would perhaps help with some of the wordsmithing to get some, especially some of those combined concepts into a guardrail format. So, with that, it was handed over to Dr. Rasser and team. And then Ray and I spent some time with them talking about what effective guardrail, interim guardrail metrics are and, and what the qualities are that they need to have. Like, you need to be able to measure it multiple times through the, the cycle. They need to be influenceable by the superintendent. They, you can have one to three per guardrail, and they last one to three years. And therefore, the board to progress monitor to ensure that that, that that guardrail and the values that it is protecting are being honored. So, we spent some time and started, we were witness to the team having some really, really great discussion. And since then, they have continued to work on that and have been putting together some of those interim guardrails. And we were able to review some of those and give them a little feedback as well. So, it's definitely an iterative, iterative process, both by way of, between the board and, and the superintendent, as well as, you know, so we're, we're coaching you all, but we're also coaching here as well. Yeah.
I think there's a question from the dais before, as we continue.
Thank you so much for summarizing the work that we engaged in as a full board. We were able to create guardrails together, which we'll hopefully be finalizing tonight. Can either of you just speak to, so that the community hears? This is a new process for our entire community. We're using a lot of terminology that is brand new for our community. Can you just explain why we created guardrails, what they are for the community?
Sure. So, the two things that the board has been working on are goals, which are about the vision of the community. And those pertain to what students know and are able to do, which the board, there already was a set of goals. And those, in that same session, we went through those with the community feedback. And the board determined at that point that they were pretty set on, on those. The guardrails then are that opportunity to speak to the values, those non-negotiable operational items. It can speak to other, other things in the system that aren't student outcomes. So, operational actions or classes of actions, essentially. And they are written in a thou shalt not type format. So, it actually puts a boundary around. It, it says what the superintendent and district cannot do as they work to achieve the goals. And it leaves options for the superintendent, but also definitely protects what, what is valued as the board has described through the guardrails.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And then those interim metrics that we talked about, those interim guardrails, then actually are written in a SMART format. And those are the things that are used for the board to, the board will get reports with that data to see how, how those values have been honored. You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Malloy. Superintendent Rasser? We have another hand, I'm sorry. I think he's going to, Superintendent Rasser is going to present, I believe, the cabinet-level guardrails, and then we'll continue from there.
So, I first want to thank the council for their coaching support and assisting myself and the team with developing what we consider to be a good first draft of, of responding to the draft guardrails that the board created during our last session. So, I want to read guardrail one so our community can most certainly hear, and then we can refamiliarize ourselves with what the board, the governance team, elevated as a, as a guardrail. Guardrail number one reads, "The superintendent will not allow the selection or implementation of curriculum programs or practices that are not evidence-based or that result in inequitable opportunities for students." So, when the team was working with the council, we identify three major areas that will most certainly serve well as interim guardrails to this guardrail. The first area being curriculum selection. The second area being curriculum implementation. And the third area being student placement practices. And let me, the first two are very self-explanatory, but let me speak a little bit about the third one, student placement practices. The last section of the guardrail speaks to inequitable opportunities for students. And we all know that depending upon what school zone you may reside in may then depend on what type of quality of educational experience our students may have. So, we saw looking at student placement practices as a way to better guarantee that the equity and opportunity for all students to receive a high-quality educational experience would be in play. So, with the first one, curriculum selection, and keep in mind that these are drafts, you know, we do need to wordsmith some of these. We came up with 100% of core, which is literacy, math, science, and social studies. Curricular resources selected for district-wide adoption from December 2025 to December of 2028 will demonstrate evidence-based and equitable practices. So, with this language that we came up with, it's clear how it associates with what the guardrail number one speaks to. Are there any questions? And I probably want to structure this where we can go through each of our things and then ask questions of the board to see whether or not there's questions for the purposes of clarity, if there's questions for the purpose of modification, or if there's questions related to this is not a good interim guardrail to measure the board's guardrail.
I don't have any questions. I, I love that it's evidence-based because I know that was one thing I learned is trying to understand curriculum. And I have lots to learn about understanding curriculum. But I'm going to open the floor for actual questions. I'm going to start at the far end, Commissioner O'Brien, Commissioner Santiago.
Yeah, I just want to say that I actually, I really do agree with the interim guardrails that's been put in place. Definitely for guardrail number two. I think that they're all good measurements to put in place for the specific guardrails.
Commissioner Santiago, we're just on number one for now.
Well, even for one. I, I just think that, I've read all the way through, but I believe that the ways that you've put the interim guardrails in there, I think they're good ways to measure the goal-size guardrail. And there will be good ways for us to track the changes throughout the time.
Any questions regarding clarity on the statement as he's presenting this so that we can determine if this is, you know, if we're on the same page, if we understand it, or as Ms. Ellensburn, Ellsburn, excuse me. See, I like to add syllables. Stated, if, if we don't feel that the guardrails presented are aligning with the goals or what we've presented, then we may have to go back and reestablish our language. So, are there any questions of clarity as we continue? Vice President Malloy?
Yeah, I actually really like this first interim guardrail as presented, just regarding the curricular resources. And I guess my only concern would be, I know that, I like the SMART format from December. It's very specific, from December 2025 to December of 2028. Does that potentially mean that we could be looking at new curricular adoption or curriculum adoption during that time? And I know that, obviously, that might be necessary. But I think a common refrain that we've heard, at least as long as I've been on the board for the last five years, is a concern that we're constantly changing curriculum and that it's overwhelming for staff to have to go through those constant changes, like every couple of years. Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah. So, we would not necessarily be looking to take existing curriculum and to engage in the process of curricular adoption for the core areas. That may be a little bit too much. As a part of my work, coming into the district and the team's work, we are evaluating our curricular resources to make sure that our curricular resources are, are standards-aligned, number one, and that they're evidence-based. And where we find that there is great deficiencies in either of those areas, we will be exploring, looking at adopting curriculum that is most certainly standards-aligned as well as evidence-based.
Thank you so much.
But it doesn't mean that we're going to wipe everything clear.
Yeah, yeah.
But as we go through the process of looking at our, and evaluating our curricular resources, if we find that there is something that does not meet those standards or is not evidence-based, then we will most certainly be looking to utilize the Council of Great City Schools' curriculum quality rubric to determine whether or not the curricular resource that we're looking at is suitable to the Rochester City School District.
I didn't even know that CO, or Council of Great City Schools had a curriculum rubric. So, thank you so much for that response.
Thank you. Before I go back to, I see another hand. Before I go back, I just want to make sure I'm getting any fresh hands, any questions. And I don't see any, Commissioner Santiago?
Just very quickly, what, what is usually the, not the expected amount, but usually the, the most used amount as far as these interim goals? So, I know that, so on, on this one, you have one for each one. But at the bottom, it says and/or. So, are, is, are we usually projecting to get about one interim goal or two to three interim goals between every guardrail?
You should have one to three. So, I would, my coaching would be that the, it would be an or and not an and because that would make for four interim guardrails. And then, and then also to think about, I can't, I don't have, can't read that far away, what some of those.
I just want to make one comment. One of the things we wanted the, the district to do tonight was give you an idea of the direction so that you all understand the direction that the district is going in. But just note that these won't, this won't be the final language because what we're going to do is create SMART goals. So, the same way you have goals that say from X to Y, we're going to do the same thing with these. So, we'll, we'll play with the language so that you'll know that, one, it can be monitored, and two, you'll know where the baseline is, and then where the district is going to progress to.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yeah. Yep.
So, my concern would be that we, when we do this, that we look in the line, we look from a perspective of who we are educating. And I'm talking about black and brown children. That the curriculum matches our students so that our students could see people in the curriculum that look like them and that have been accomplishing things within, that have accomplished things in the past. We have not done a very good job of that. I saw a video the other day where a young kid thought that all the black inventors were dead and not knowing that they are current black inventors. And so, I'm interested in making sure that if we're selecting curriculum, that it's not a white curriculum, but it is a curriculum that is going to meet the needs of black and brown students.
So, to, to address that, I think two things. The first of which is I didn't, we didn't know because the district didn't discuss this when we were in the meeting with them, but didn't know they were going to include the council's rubric for scoring the curriculum actually in the guardrails. So, that was a surprise to me when I saw it. But we do have, in that rubric, and we actually have an updated version of it as well that we'll share. But in there, we actually do have specific language around curriculum that is culturally responsive, et cetera. So, you'll see that in there.
Thank you.
Dr. Hart, may I ask the question? Would it behoove the board or the governance team to make modifications to guardrail number one to include language that is very explicit, that includes cultural responsiveness?
Yes.
I don't, if the board, so I think that is a discussion that the, the board needs to have. If the board is satisfied with the idea that the, that, that the rubric already speaks to that, that that curriculum quality rubric speaks to that, then no. But if the board does want to be more explicit than it would be, then, then having more explicit language is fine. But I think that, that's something that the board, it's not required. But if the board would like to, they are definitely welcome to have that conversation and, and add that in, in some way.
If I could, just one other question. I'm also concerned about students, our special education students. And so, I don't know how we align that or articulate that. But when, you know, we're talking about inequitable opportunities. And certainly, we don't do as good of a job as we should do with our special education students as we see in our graduation rates. So, it's, you know, when we look at the graduation rates for students with special needs, and there was another, oh, ELL, then we have to look at, you know, what's equitable as, for those particular populations. I don't know how you word that, but I wanted to share that because those two, those two areas are the areas that has, that we graduate the least, ELLs and special education students. Commissioner, I mean, President Simmons?
Just getting back on my screen. Did any, did you want to respond to that? Or is this just for us to consider as we move forward for additional conversation at another point in time?
So, I think that, I think that's something that if the board is wanting that to be addressed, or then the conversation could happen now. or then the conversation could happen now so that, so that the staff is absolutely clear on what they need to write because the thing is, or if there is, so another option is, is it a matter of changing this guardrail or is it a matter of adding, adding another guardrail? You know, again, less focus when you have more guardrails, just, there's always trade-offs and that, you know, that's, that's the board's decision and up to the board. But the other, the other piece of that is, there are only three interim guardrails per guardrail. So a guardrail can't be everything. One guardrail cannot be everything. So the board needs to decide how they want to, how they want to do that, or if another guardrail needs to be added.
I just, I wanted to just simply get a little clarity. Like you mentioned, the cabinet or the administration pointed to having the Council for Great City Schools linked in. And for example, the culturally relevant curriculum is part of the rubric that's, that's there. So again, like you said, is it a matter of us explicitly putting it there or do we just honor that, hey, it's embedded and understood that that's part of the package and it's, it's pointed to there. But to the other point, is that language also in there around special education or ELL students? Is that also in the rubric? I do see that there's an attachment there, but I just scrolled through it really quickly.
Yeah, and like I said, there's an updated version of that. The updated version has it. We do address in that, ELL students, special education students, we don't call them out separately. But I think one of the things that you could do, just to help, is you already have the language of inequitable opportunities for students. You could add just inequitable opportunities for student groups and it would cover, you know, obviously all students, but then students by student group as well. And then we can adjust the language. It wouldn't necessarily change the interim guardrails, per se, but there's some things that you can put into the interim guardrails that would then show that you're addressing the needs of student groups. So just a thought.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes. I just, I just want to go back to what Commissioner Elliott was saying. I don't think we need to have, add another guardrail, but I do believe that one part of what she was saying as far as the reduction of, or the lower level of graduation rates with our special needs children, I think is privy to the movement that they have ensued over the last couple of years. They, they, they need consistency. So I think that when you have consistency with children that has special needs, that we, we find that they do well. They don't adapt to change a lot and I, and I think that is a major concern. So I think that to her, to her point, I don't think it needs to be an actual guardrail added. I think that that's something at the administrative level that we need to look at to make sure that these kids, they stay at the schools consistently and have the same teachers. And with that, I think that we will see a higher level of graduation rates. That is just my opinion.
Commissioner Patterson, did you have a statement or question?
My thought is that the verbiage that you have here, the suggested edit for board consideration in the verbiage results in inequitable opportunities for students and encapsulates, encapsulates, if I'm pronouncing that properly, all these groups already. So the language is there for me. I don't have to have a discussion or enter into a discussion relative to adding other things when that verbiage right there clearly outlines that it includes and inclusive of all these groups we just named. So I just wanted to add that point.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. And respectfully, as I mentioned before, I unfortunately, I know I've been here for 10 months and have been at every meeting and I hate that I'm leaving because this is such a critical meeting, but I am looking forward to catching up on the information. I do have to depart and at this time, I'm going to turn the facilitation over to Vice President Malloy, who will work in tandem with CGCS for the remainder of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Simmons. Were there any other questions at this time for our coaches?
I think, I think one of the things we can do, I think for now, since we've got your, the feedback that you just shared, we've mentioned that this language isn't final language. So for now, I would offer, let us think, let us keep the language the way it is. And when we fine tune the language, creating, as we shared, those SMART goals, we'll see if we can create something that, that addresses what you need with, as you shared, Commissioner Patterson, the language that you, that currently exists, but addresses the concern. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Elliott, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So I guess at this time, we'll allow Dr. Rosser to continue on with the next guardrails.
So thank you very much. So the next interim guardrail curriculum implementation from December 2025 to December 2028, the percentage of classroom walkthroughs showing evidence of standards-based instruction using district-approved curriculum will increase from a certain percentage to another percentage across all schools and classrooms. And we would measure that using a district-wide walkthrough tool. Questions?
Oops. So I'm unable to open that tool at this time, unfortunately. Is there any way that that can be put up on the screen?
And as mentioned, this is a draft. This is not, it's not been finalized.
That might, that walkthrough form might be still in process and something that, a metric that they're still working on. So it might not be ready for primetime yet.
Fantastic. We don't need to see that.
But maybe, maybe a little bit of explanation of the types of things that would be on that?
Dr. Wright?
Good evening, Commissioners. So what we have been finding is that there is a need to level set what the expectations are in the classrooms across the district. And one of the best and easiest ways to do that is by having an agreed-upon tool that everyone, whether they're building administrators, central office administrators, will be able to interpret as they are evaluating what's happening in the classroom. So we started with Vicky Ramos, Dr. Ramos, last year started with uncovering the curriculum that we are using. And she found that we were using a lot of stuff. And in some areas, especially within our bilingual classrooms, they weren't appropriate. So right now, we are establishing what our scientifically-based curricula will be. And then we're going to match that with instructional methodologies via a walkthrough tool. And we are currently designing this walkthrough tool. We're not ready to publish it yet because we want to engage teachers and administrators because buy-in in what we deem as being the best practices for Rochester is absolutely critical. So some of the things that are on the tool would be ensuring that the lessons meet grade level standards. One of the Commissioners mentioned our special education population, our ENL population, our bilingual population. And unfortunately, what we have seen has been the watering down of curriculum for those subgroups. That's not what we want. We want to make sure that we are teaching at grade level and providing scaffolds to help students rise to meet those expectations. Additionally, we want to make sure that all of the materials that teachers are using are district-approved materials. Because of the constant shifting in leadership, there have been many different messages. And now we want to make sure that everyone is using the same types of products in different ways because you have to differentiate so that centrally, we can ensure that professional development is given to teachers so that they can feel successful in delivering instruction for their students.
Thank you so much for that explanation.
And if I can just add real quick, you know, as I mentioned during my 100-day report out, that currently we have a system of schools where depending upon what school you go to, you will see something different at, let's say, the third grade than if you go to another school. What we're attempting to do, particularly through using the student-centered methodology, is to make sure that we're aligning what one can expect in one school to what one can expect in school B through Z.
Thank you so much. I've seen some hands. I guess I'll start at this end of the dais. Commissioner Griffin, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Malloy. This is to Dr. Wright. I didn't hear that in your, in your explanation for the changes, which I think are very good, that you would be meeting the children where they are, where they're at. I know that some kids are not at the right, at the same level as others, but they may be in the same grade. So what are we using, how does that, how is that tool going to be effective in that manner, reaching the kids where they're at?
So just real quick here, and I'm, I didn't set these expectations ahead of time, but typically, this is a conversation between the board and the superintendent. The superintendent is welcome to call on his staff if he needs assistance with explaining something. So all questions go through the superintendent. And if, if he cannot answer them, then, then he can throw it to his staff. I didn't set those parameters. I apologize, but this is a, this is a board, a board superintendent conversation unless otherwise.
I just need to understand the process because you're saying what she's asking should go to the superintendent, but I just want to, how are we supposed to be engaging here? That's what I want to understand. So that, the questions that I'm asking are not, you know, just in vain questions. So what is it that we're supposed to be asking? What are we supposed to be talking with, with our colleagues about versus what?
So if you need clarity around what the measurement is, what it's going to do, how it speaks to that guardrail, then, then definitely ask those questions and then have that conversation accordingly. But it's a conversation between the board and the superintendent as the superintendent is the board.
Not to you all?
Not, and you can ask us questions too, but as the coaches, but to the, to the administrative staff, if, if the superintendent needs them, he can call on them, but if he can answer it, we'll keep it there. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't explain all that before.
It's a two-part question, but you want to direct, that's a question I have. So you, who you want, you want to answer?
I can, I can most certainly address the question. So when we talk about educating our children and making sure that all of our children have a high educational experience here in the Rochester City School District, there are multiple things that we need to guarantee are in place. So when we talk about the varying levels that our students find themselves at right now, we need to also keep in mind that we do have an MTSS, which is a multi-tiered support system, so that those students who might need greater supports, that they're receiving greater supports. This is not necessarily, these guardrails don't necessarily speak to that, but that's embedded in the work that we will be doing and continuing to do here in the district.
Okay. And, and those are the things we don't see, you know, when I'm asking, is something that, you know, is not written, but is, is, you're actually going to be addressing those needs. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question would be, we are, 2027, you know, Regents is going to go away, per se, you know, we're trying to get rid of that, which I think is a really good thing. I guess my question would be, with that tool that is being put in place, would that also play a part? Would that also be set up so that, that, that type of, you know, the Regents part of it is not, is not applied? Or then would that system have to be changed again because the Regents would be, would be part of that too?
There's no correlation. There's no correlation between the walkthrough tool and whether or not, you know, the Rochester City School District or any school district in the state of New York implements the Regents testing. There's no correlation between it. The walkthrough tool is really looking at, as Deputy Wright spoke to, making sure that standards-based curriculum is being implemented in each and every, every one of our classrooms, making sure that the resources that our teachers are using are standards-based. But standards-based, standards don't have, well, they do. Standards, the end testing, particularly at the high school level, will not have an impact on our walkthrough tool.
Okay. And, and I just want to just end it with this. With the, with the curriculums that we currently have, you know, the math and science, will we still be having our children, putting them through the AP or the calculus? Or will we try to, because, to be honest with you, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm just, I'm just going to say that. But I think that, you know, unless they're going to, into a certain field, I don't think that children, if they want to go to that, that certain level of math skillset, algebra, I think that they can fall off and go into another, you know, like some type of apprenticeship. It doesn't always have to go to the calculus or AP level. I know, and I'm just going to always refer back to when I was in school, we didn't have to go take calculus. We could take two, we had two years of science and three years of math back when I was in school. And, and, and we, and a lot of people in my era are very successful. So I say that to say, why do we have to take the kids all the way up to the AP or calculus when it's not even really necessary if they're not going into the field of, of, of engineering or being a doctor or something like that? So this is just something I'm just putting out there because I see across the board in some states, they're not actually having the children go to that higher level. And we're, we're pushing them to do that. That's maybe something down the road that we may need to look at to, to reduce to that and not force our kids to go into those higher level math.
Commissioner Griffin?
Not necessary. So I just, I just want, wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing that. I want to make sure that's getting pretty curricular, just those types of questions. Doesn't mean that they're not important, but we want to focus more on.
If I can just respond real quick. So right now, in any school district across America, AP calculus classes are not mandatory for every student. They're an option for students. So as you spoke, when we look at the Commissioners' regulation on what students need in order to graduate, it doesn't state that students need to have AP advanced placement. That is an option that is most certainly, and I'm glad that the Rochester City School District makes that option available to those students who are seeking to receive AP credit for the purposes of either college admissions or college credit attainment through their successful testing, taking of the test. But it's not something that is mandatory and it's not a part of the walkthrough tool.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Rosser. Are there any other comments about curriculum implementation? Go ahead, Commissioner Elliott.
So the blank here under curriculum implementation, is this something that you and your staff, Dr. Rosser, will come up with? Or is this something that this board discusses with you in terms of percentages? Because I'm thinking that by 2028, this would be a higher percentage. I don't know where we are now in terms of district-approved curriculum as it stands now. But, and I don't, you all have to tell me if by December 2028, we shouldn't have 100% or 90% or something very, very high, if we're talking about just the, the implementation of it, of the, part of your walkthroughs, that we should be seeing a high percentage by 2028. I could be wrong on that, but are you asking us to, are you, your staff is going to?
Yeah, we're going to most certainly develop, you know, what these percentages are. Right now, they're, they're blank.
And Commissioner Elliott, just, I'll respond as a, as a coach, if that's okay to that one. But the, for both the interim goals, which the district will, will set, and the interim guardrails, all of those are the superintendent and superintendent's team. So the board won't provide any, your job is to focus on, are we setting the right guardrails? And then they'll focus on, here's where we want to move from. And you can, you can assess that as you go, but that team will do those, both for the interim goals and the interim guardrails.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions about curriculum implementation interim guardrail? Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to the third.
So this, the third one, we see that there are two that are there, and this is because we're still having some internal conversations about what we're still having some internal conversations about what might we, we set as that goal for student placement. What we came up with, and as I mentioned, we have not yet landed on either or of these, but we did want to list them because we're still in the process of having conversations internally about them. But the first one reads, "By June 2026, the district will audit, standardize, and centralize student placement criteria and processes to ensure 100% of schools have clear, documented, equity-vetted criteria aligned to district standards and which do not include exclusionary practices that are not evidence-based." So that's the first one that we're, we're sort of playing around with. One of the things that we have to consider when it comes to developing the interim guardrails is looking at beyond just one year, because these interim guardrails can exist, if I'm not mistaken, up to three years. So we, we most certainly will need to play around with this so that it reflects an interim guardrail that can be measured over three years. Any questions related to this first one that we're, we're sort of toying around with?
Just an example of this, I was at, this has been years ago now, but I happened to be getting my car fixed. And there was a gentleman in there who wanted his child to be placed at school 25. Person in placement said, no, you don't want to put your child in. I put him in 46. Now that was race-based, right? Clearly race-based. And so, you know, that, I just shared that because that's the kind of stuff that was going on down in placement, that they were putting the white kids in some of the areas where they thought that they were doing good. But there was a particular program at 25 school that this family wanted their children to be a part of. So I would just throw that out there as an example of what I've experienced.
If I can just speak to that real quick, what's going to be critically important with our work that we, we engage in as we transform the Rochester School District is to make sure that every one of our buildings is a building that is offering high-quality educational opportunities to all children. So while that may have been a part of the conversation, we are working to make sure that all of our schools are attractive to all populations of students.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
I appreciate that comment because I think that the schools should all be leveled on the same level. And every, every school should have opportunities that one school has, should be at all schools. So I appreciate that comment.
I think that kind of, are there any other comments, first of all? That lends itself well to, I guess, the next bullet for student placement practices.
So by December 2028, representation of historically underserved student groups will be proportional to overall enrollment in the district with no school or program deviating more than five percentage points from district demographic averages. And I'll say real quick that that, that five percentage points is just an arbitrary number that we just stuck in there, but we still need to do our research to get a better understanding as to how the proportions exist right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I just want to say that the second one that you just presented connects exactly to what we were speaking about earlier as far as ELL learners and special education students. And so just want to say I support that one a lot, definitely to the conversation that was just had.
Thank you. Explain this to me in layman's terms.
So right now.
I'm trying to read it. It's not happening.
So right now, there are a number of our schools where we have a disproportionate number of students with exceptionalities. So when we look at certain buildings, certain buildings have a greater number of students with exceptionality classes than other buildings. We want to make sure that when it comes to all of our student populations, that there's a fair, equitable representation of our student demographics across all of our buildings. So this is what that particular guardrail speaks to.
Specifically to the students, not necessarily programs per se, because there are differences in programs throughout our schools. So if you look like an Edison program, for example, or School of the Arts, for example, they have different kind of offerings.
Right.
But this is in regards to the student population.
Student population. So when we talk about our L students, when we talk about our students of color, when we talk about our, our students with exceptionalities, when we talk about our multilingual learners, you know, we want to make sure that as, and I hate this term that the state uses, that our subgroups, I hate using the word sub because nobody says sub, our, our groups of students are fairly represented throughout all of our buildings in an equitable manner.
Okay.
And I do think that part of that may also be considering, that you have to take into consideration where our parents want to have our students. So, and that also may need to be taken into consideration.
Well, not necessarily, because if we're working to make sure that every building has a high-quality educational opportunity for all of our children, then it's not necessarily where parents may want the children. Because right now, parents, from my understanding, are requesting schools in which they feel that their children have a better opportunity with receiving a high-quality education. But once we equalize all of our schools, then my belief and what I've seen, particularly in Buffalo, New York, is that there then is a high premium on each of our schools where our parents are seeking to get their children in. And it may be based upon the programming, and it may be based upon how we have made sure that that school is a school of choice.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rosser.
Balance that. And I'm looking at the term, you know, equity is what I'm looking.
Commissioner Elliott, I would just ask if you could speak more into the mic. It's a little challenging to hear you on a recording. Thank you.
Just that, trying to balance that term equity with what this particular bullet point is representing. So I may be a little slow on it, but I'll study it more.
Thank you so much. I have a quick question just for our coaches. As I look at what we've reviewed so far, you know, we have interim guardrails. Well, we're still on guardrail number one, right? And I see one, two, three. So we have four interim guardrails that have been produced for.
It will ultimately be three. And I think
Oh, okay.
Part of the, part of the conversation here, I think, which is important, is to kind of hear, one, hear the board's feedback, but also have board members really reflect on, are we going down the path, and remember we said this is, we're going to wordsmith it and do other things and make up smart goals. But are we going down the path of what we might envision for each of the guardrails? Fully expect that I think some of the, some of the language will be tweaked and clarified.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions regarding the student placement practices at this time? All right. I guess we can move on to our board guardrail number two.
Okay. So I'm going to read the guardrail first, and then I'll speak to the two interim guardrails. The guardrail reads, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that compromise the psychological or physical safety of students or staff." So our first guardrail centers around proactive safety system compliance, and it reads, "The percentage of school facilities completing all required safety protocols such as fire drills, lockdown drills, safety audits, mental health screenings, threat assessments should be on schedule and will remain at 100% from December 2025 to December 2028."
Before we ask questions, can you go to maybe the staff and student safety perception as well? And then we'll just save our questions for after we've made it through.
Most certainly. So staff and student safety perception, of course, you know, you have your quantitative data, and then you also have your anecdotal or your qualitative data. And the staff and safety, student safety perception speaks more so to the qualitative. The percentage of elementary students who report worrying about safety always or usually at schools will decrease from 40% in January 2025 to a particular percent by January 2029. We do currently offer a school climate survey in the district that is administered every January, and we're looking to use that as our, our survey to be able to measure staff and student safety perception.
And it looks like it says many climate surveys administered quarterly as well. And if we were to click on that baseline data, is there data there for the public yet?
I believe this is data from the last survey that was administered this past January.
And just to clarify, we took a, we took a look at the data. I just want to mention that it is quantifiable. So you mentioned qualitative data, it's qualitative questions, but it's quantifiable data on how students perform. So you, as a board, will be able to see whether there's progress on that quantifiable data.
Thank you for that clarity, Dr. Hart.
Thank you so much. This is just a, you know, I teach sociology as one of my courses, and I'm just teaching qualitative versus quantitative to all of my students. And I'm actually using it now for the, really the first time in this sense. All right, some questions. Commissioner Santiago, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, within the two intrums that you have provided, and specifically for the second one, the, the guardrail is students and staff. And so I'm just wondering how does any of the, the two guardrail connect back to staff specifically? I do see student, you know, students inside of the wording, but specifically for staff also.
Dr. Wright, can you help me with this? And I think it may just be the, are you asking about the percentage of elementary students who report? And it speaks to staff and student perception? Is that what you're asking?
Either of the two. But just to make it clear, so for, for board guardrail two, the guardrail is, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that compromise the psychological or physical safety of staff or students and students." And so my, my question is, how does any of the two interim guardrails that you've given connect specifically to staff? I see in here where it says students, you know, how this can connect back to students. But how does it connect back to staff as far as that guardrail?
Yeah, on the second one, I can speak more specifically. The annual survey, the school climate survey, actually seeks to get that information from students, staff, and parents. So the perception data that we would be seeking for the second bullet, and I'm looking to see that we might need to update the language, because the language says the percentage of elementary school students, but we probably need to update that to read the percentage of elementary students and staff who report worrying about safety, so that there's clarity there. But the, the school climate survey currently captures information from students, staff, and parents at the elementary level.
Last question, do we have anything specifically for measuring secondary level also? Because elementary is important, but how do we ensure that we're looking at all of our students inside the district besides just elementary? Is the same?
Yeah, the same, the same survey has elementary, I think, middle and high.
So maybe just switching the wording in there, just say all students, because in here it just seems like specifically elementary.
You can't remember why we chose elementary? Was that just an oversight? Okay.
And another thing that I would add for the board, if it's okay, if we make, just make this switch for you, rather than students or staff, just make it students and staff. We can wordsmith that for you if you all agree. We don't have to have a formal anything, but that way it will cover for you that, that guardrail has to cover students and staff, not or staff.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Other commissioners, would you like to comment? Commissioner Elliott?
The, the other piece that we've seen around safety is we've seen parents come in with altercations, either with students or other parents. And so I'll just point that out, there's got to be a way in which that we can protect our students from other parents that come in, parents who may be having altercations with, with each other from, you know, the community. So I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there because there has to be those kinds of, of safety measures as well. You know, we've seen, for example, some altercations at graduations between parents and others. And so I just wanted to lift that up, that in some ways, we've got to, you know, protect in certain instances, the community from our students. And we've got to include that in there. So.
So that would be part of our tactical strategy on making sure that we are working to meet this goal, is to make sure that those actions, those preventative things that we're putting into place will most certainly guarantee that we meet these goals.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elliott, just, Commissioner Elliott as well, just one of the things, if you go back to, all of this, by the way, just so you know, is grounded in the document that we shared with you, where we kind of laid out the color-coded kind of sets of things. And there's a guardrails page. One of the things on that guardrail, guardrails page talks about, does the superintendent and his staff have the ability to control at least 80% of whatever guardrail you set as a board? Meaning that the bulk of whatever that thing is, the superintendent has, and their staff can control that, that issue. I think, as the superintendent shared, it's an important issue, but it's one of those things that we would ask the board to go back and revisit. Does the superintendent really have control over 80% of what, of how parents interact with each other? There might be things that you can do on the backend, but in terms of preventative, that might be a challenge. So those are, that's just something to think about as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that, that there'd be a challenge, it'll be a challenge. But in some ways, I think we've got, just for the safety of people, you know, we've got to make sure that we respond to that in some way. I'm not exactly sure how that is, but there's got to be some way that we respond to it. I remember years ago, when we had, Van White was on this board for a long time, but he also defended a student that was killed on campus. I think it was at Jefferson, if I'm not mistaken. So that comes up a lot for me, that, you know, that can happen again if we don't, in some way, put something in place. I don't, I don't, and I'm not sure what that is. I do know, one of the things that I would do when I would go to graduations, I've said to the parents, we're not taking this foolishness, or we could stop the graduation. You've got to make sure when you come in here that you respond, this is for our students, you know? So you can't be just being foolish and, and having these kinds of altercations. I would say that from the, from the podium. So that's what I would do. But some kind of way, we've got to help to protect our families and students from that. And that's just one example of safety issues.
Commissioner Elliott, thank you so much for that insight. Are there other commissioners who'd like to comment at this time? We good? All right. I think that we can go on to board guardrail number three.
Okay. So board guardrail number three says, "The superintendent will not exclude the voices of stakeholders impacted by major district decisions." So the two interim guardrails that the team and I have drafted are as follows, and they'll need to be wordsmithed, of course. 100% of district-recognized parent groups report being informed about and having opportunities to provide input on major district decisions between December 2025 and December 2028. So one of the things that we played off of that's currently in place is the fact that when it comes to our policies, our policies are surfaced through our parent groups. And we were planning to do the same sort of opportunities, particularly around budgeting, particularly around other major district decisions, to make sure that the groups that we currently have access to are a major part of parent engagement and major decision-making. The second one, stakeholder input integration. The percentage of all major district decisions where documented stakeholder input was collected, analyzed, and explicitly addressed in the final decision rationale will increase from a certain percentage from December 2025 to December 2028. And this, we found that it is important that as we are engaging our stakeholders, that we also engage in the process of documenting their engagement or their input, so that there's evidence that speaks to our stakeholder input.
Thank you. And I'll just start with one quick question, just for the stakeholder input. And I'll just start with one quick question, just for the stakeholder input integration. Really it applies for the parent engagement one. Can you talk about what that means overall structure for data? Can you talk about what that means overall structure for data?
So what we are still, we're still having conversations around that. So, you know, we just developed these, was it earlier this week? Yeah, it was earlier this week. And, you know, so some of this is still, as I mentioned earlier, a working document. So we haven't necessarily talked explicitly about how some of these things, what tools will we use in order to be able to capture this data.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like I see some hands. Commissioner Griffin, go ahead.
When collecting the data, this is just a suggestion. Because sometimes you don't get the, the numbers you're looking for when you're collecting the data. At this time, we have a lot of sporting events that are going on. It would probably be who, some members of the district to be there to engage with the parents that are at, at these games and probably get some surveys from the people that you actually are not, may not see or may not, you know? That is just one of, one of the big ways to, to get, get the surveys or get the, the data that you need. That's just, that's just a suggestion, but it's a very good one because you get a lot of them out at like the cheerleading events or the, the sporting events. So those are the things you might want to tap into in the city to see if you can get some of that, that data that you're looking for. That's just a suggestion.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
Yes, I have one. And this is to our colleagues from Council of Great City Schools. What comes to mind to me is, and I don't know if this fits in there, is measuring confidence. Confidence. Because I think that that's going to drive increased enrollment. How do we, and it's just sort of something that came to mind as we're, particularly with this particular guard rail. Is that, is that measurable? And should we be looking at something like confidence in the sense of how that can, in my mind, increase enrollment, increase people's positive experience and positive view of our district? And I know a lot of that is going to depend on how we, and I, I believe it's going to take a long time for us to gain the kind of confidence that I would envision us having in, in this district. But is there a way in which we can, and maybe it has to do with ensuring that we put these particular programs in place and people begin to talk about how well those, those programs are. Now, on the flip side of that, I think the lack of confidence comes in when they see a board that's not working together well, when they see low academic achievement, when parents are not welcomed into our district and that kind of thing. So I, I don't know if I'm off or not, but if, if, if that could be spoken to in a way, and I don't know if that could be a part of a guard rail or where that would go. I'm not exactly sure. But I, we've got to stop hem- hemorrhaging students who are going to charter schools and keeping our more than $100 million within this district. So that's, I, I sort of bring that up. I don't know where I'm going to go, where that can go. But I think that, that's something that has to be looked at in terms of, you know, goals and guardrails and, and the like.
So I think, and thank you for sharing that. I think it's a, it's a board's prerogative. But again, going back to the guard rail itself, if you feel like, and if the board collectively feels like that guard rail is not capturing what you intended when you created, created this language, then as a board, you want to tweak the language to make sure that the, the district is interpreting the lang, the new guard rail in a way that you would see fit as you see the measures that they put for.
Yeah, I think the level of confidence is, can be an asset.
But that would be something that you would have to, as a board, you have to change the guard rail to reflect what it is you're specifically looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
I just wanted to say this, and as a whole with confidence, I think you build on a child's confidence. One is literacy. Literacy is a big thing that, that, that brings down one's confidence. I know if I wasn't able to read, I don't know what I would do. So that's one aspect that I think that we are building on, that we, that's our number one goal to achieve, which will help in confidence. What we, when we're talking about the kids in the charter school, I also want to reflect on the urban suburban as well. I think that once we build our schools up, one of the areas of concern is our kids going to the urban suburban, and that's a cost effect too. And it also affects the transportation. So for me, when we talk about the kids being divided out and money being spent, we also need to look at the urban suburban, how they taking our best children and moving them out to, and taking them from our district. And they're, and they're strategically doing that as well. So I think as a whole, once we get our district on a level ground and a level playing field with everything that we need, and that's everything athletics and academics, that we will see an influx and we can, we can stop, we can stop or have a moratorium on the urban suburban and stop that and keep our kids in our district and some of our best kids. So I think that's, that's something that we need to address as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin, for expressing those thoughts. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, just, I want to also propose, you know, the, the conversation of, of our enrollment, whether that is through a guard mail, a guard rail or another goal possibly. And if it's a guard rail possibly saying that the superintendent shall not do actions that reduces the confidential, not confidentiality, the confidence of our parents and students slash community. That's an idea for guardrails or possibly for goals to have, to set out goals for our enrollment. And I think that that will, that, that will be one of our priorities and that will set the administration to focus on how do we improve these certain areas to either not lose more students enrollment and gain students back? Or for this guard rail, how do we put things in place to ensure that our, our parents and our students aren't losing confidence in our district and we're losing more students? And so I think for the board, that might be something to consider, either adding another guard rail or adding a goal to our, our goals.
And Dr. Hart, can you just speak perhaps to the, thank you so much, by the way, Commissioner Santiago. Dr. Hart, can you speak possibly to just, like, we came up with three board guardrails? And now we have interim guardrails that are being set by the superintendent. The normal number of guardrails is recommended between one and five, was it?
Between one and five.
Okay. And so we came up with the three guardrails. I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is if the board is satisfied with having these three board guardrails? Or is there a need to add more at this point?
I'm okay with it. I'm sorry. You gotta call on somebody.
Go ahead, Commissioner Patterson.
I'm okay with any recommendation made by the Council of Great City Schools or trying to help us to be a more functional board. And I'm just going to stay positive. I think that the guy, the guardrails that we have so far are specific. And I think they're well-written. We agreed on these. And I don't see any reason that we should be adding or deleting from what we have. Maybe manipulating a little bit as far as word verbiage, yes, I'm okay with that. But I think we've done a good job. I think they've got a, done a good job in helping us to getting to the point to where we are today. So I'm just going to stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. And just to that point, if I could ask our coaches too, guardrails are ever evolving, correct? Like that we have the opportunity to set new guardrails at some point? Or are these typically going to last us five years? Or do you see other boards changing guardrails, you know, you know, a year or two in? Are these something that can change over time?
No, guardrails similar to your goals, what we say about guardrails is anywhere from one to three years, you want to keep them consistent. So keep them consistent for the next three years unless, unless you feel like, I'll take one, for example, the, maybe the parent one, if you feel like, okay, we're consistently doing that well. We're consistently seeing engagement from our community, our parents, our stakeholders. We don't need to continue to monitor that guardrail because we see that it's consistently happening. So there are things that you can sunset, you can add another guardrail at that point. But typically you want to stick to it for the same reason you want to stick to the goals. What you want to do is help the district focus on the critical issues that you think are important for the, for the district. So that you're not, as a board, consistently changing. Same for your goals. You don't want to consistently change goals every year because what you're going to do is you have the district going in different directions every year. So once you set them, you want to stick, stick to them.
Yeah, and that was more like interesting follow-up to what Commissioner Santiago had mentioned. And so I'm going to just, he had a follow-up, I believe, or did you, you done there first? Okay.
I just wanted to say to Commissioner Santiago, I understand your point, but I think as we work through these go, work through the guardrails, I believe that that will all come to fruition. It's reference to, you know, the, the, in reference to what you're stating. I think that we don't need to add to it, but we will see a difference once we accomplish the goals in, in the, in how the respect level is with the children and the parents, what have you. So I think that that, that was, that would, that's going to, that's going to work out itself, in my opinion. But I do understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I just think that it's an important thing to the, to the board and the district right now. And I don't know if that's adding a guard rail, adding a goal, or, you know, possibly even adding this final guard rail to possibly add that in. But I do think that it's an important thing that we talk about, you know, on a daily, on a month, not monthly, meeting basis. You know, it's, it's often spoken about. And so I think that is something that is a priority. And of course, I know that our superintendent and their team is, is, they also take this as a priority. But like the, the school board member said earlier, what the board focuses on gives, you know, our, our administration more fuel to also focus on. And so that's why I made that proposal. I do think it'll be important, but yeah, that's just my, my ideas and my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you so much. And Cindy, I know you had something to share.
No, I, I, the only thing I was going to say is that, and it would need to be, there would need to be a majority of the board deciding that. But we could attempt to add something into this third guardrail that could address that. It might take some wordsmithing. Right now, there's two interim goals for that. So perhaps a third interim goal, something in a way that a third interim goal could somehow, I don't have, I have no idea what that would be or what that would look like. But we could, if the board wanted to entertain that, we would, we could try it. That's what I mean. The, the board would, well, so the language in the guardrail would change to address, to have an addition of something about public confidence or something like that. That's, is that what I heard?
Yep.
Can you just rephrase what you had asked for?
Yeah, I, for guardrail specifically, the reason why I said public confidence is because it, it makes the most sense for a guardrail. If it was a goal, it would be, you know, to, to lose less students to, you know, charter schools, urban suburban, et cetera. But confidence, as far as public confidence slash trust, is really meaning that a lot of times the reason why, you know, parents and students are leaving is because of their confidence and their trust in the district and lack of it. And so that's the reason why I use that word is to, you know, that's the intention behind it. And that's what we're talking about here about the intentions.
And, and I think too that, that, because I throw it out there, but I'm, I'm respectful of what has been done already. But that, that has come to mind. And so what I'm thinking is that if we are meeting our goals and implementing these guardrails, that confidence may come, but I want us to keep that in the forefront of our mind because that really is what we need to be looking at. Because that's going to determine a whole lot of things. Increased enrollment, graduation rates, academic achievement. That's going to, and you know, some, some person, I think we, years ago, had a high of 37,000 students at one point. And then they began to, to leave. And here, here's the other thing. Our parents didn't care where they sent their kids. They didn't care. I mean, it, it, some of the charter schools don't perform as well as we, we, our district performs higher. But they did not want the name of the Rochester City School District because of its reputation. And so that's what I want us to help to change that, that, that perception. And so that it increases, you know, enrollment and, and we could decrease the charter schools.
Thank you so much for those comments.
So one thing as well, so a next step of the process, and this might be another way to, to handle that suggestion as well. Another step, the, the next step in the process will be our working with you all to set board guardrails. And so you'll set guardrails for the, for the board, meaning here are the things that we are going, here's the values that we're going to have. Here's the things that we're going to live by. One of the things that you could do in the goal, in the board setting about guardrails process is establish a similar guardrail around confidence that now becomes a governance guardrail that would not only be the superintendent and their team, but the superintendent and the board collectively. And that guardrail might empower all of you to say, it's all of our responsibility to address the confidence within the district. And then we'll measure ourselves collectively around what that looks like. Does that make sense?
It does.
Thank you. So at this time, I think she, Clerk Winn, do we need to advance this particular document? We don't advance the interim guard, uh, guardrails. We're advancing the other document.
Correct. So there were two documents attached to board docs that you all received. The first one is titled R C S D guardrails, where the first half reviews the three guardrails that you discussed tonight. The second half you did not talk about yet, but they were the board guardrails that you developed in a retreat a couple of months ago. That is what the board would have to vote on. You do not vote on the interims. That was just more for discussion. So I don't know if you all are ready to move this to the business meeting for a vote? Or maybe perhaps move it to the business meeting for further discussion? Either would be an option. Your business meeting is on October 30th.
Okay, Commissioner Santiago?
I think it might be good to add it for a discussion because it sounds like we've made some agreements that some things have to be changed. Like specifically where it says students or, you know, staff. So I think move it to another discussion where we can see the final and how it will look.
How are other commissioners feeling about that?
And this is for, you're talking about the guard, the, the three guardrails that you, we just talked about right now.
Right, because there's still some things that we have to edit from the discussion today. And then even for the board guardrails, if that is a discussion about adding something, I think that it would be good to bring it to then. And I think we also can have more representation at the same time in that discussion instead of voting for it tonight.
They've already recommended some changes. I'm okay with those changes and I'm ready to vote on the section we just talked about tonight.
Well, we wouldn't be voting on it tonight. It would be just moved to the board business meeting to, we'd motion it, the board business meeting where we would vote on it. Anyone else?
I agree to motion it to the next meeting. You said you want this motion? That's all you're doing today? We're not voting, correct?
Do we need to motion it even if?
Okay, yes, I'm fine with that. Yep. Sorry.
That would just be for further discussion? Clerk Winn?
If you want to vote on it, you would motion it to the business meeting for the vote. If you just want to discuss it, we can place it on your business meeting agenda for further conversation. In the meantime, I can work with the CGCS coaches to get a most updated version prior to the meeting so that everyone can have that language and be prepared for the discussion.
And just to ensure that we have like full board participation, we do have two members that are not here currently. And so I respect that some of us might want to go ahead and vote on it this evening. It might behoove us to put that on the board business meeting agenda so that we can have any further discussion or changes discussed then.
Okay, so what, so this would be around the guardrails, the three guardrails. Make sure that they are worded as you will, as you would adopt them. Just reminder again that you don't vote for the interim guardrails and those will Just reminder again that you don't vote for the interim guardrails and those will, they're still working through those things. And then are we talking yet about the board's guardrails for the board?
We haven't yet had that discussion. Okay. So I guess, do we need to move the discussion then to the board guardrails?
Yes, you can talk about the remainder, the updates to the superintendent guardrails as well as the board guardrails at your business meeting, if that's your wish.
At the business meeting, okay. Although we haven't had a discussion about the guardrails for the board this evening yet.
Right. You can, well, it's 8:30, so that would be totally up to you all if you want to stay and continue that conversation. But if you do not, both of those things can be picked up in your business meeting.
Okay. Is that amenable to other members for this evening? Because it is already 8:30 and we have not yet discussed on that other document, the R C S D guardrails for the board. Would you like to put that on the agenda for the business meeting so that we can have a more thorough discussion then?
I support that.
I support that as well, sorry.
Is everyone else okay with, with that? Okay, without further discussion, it looks like. All right. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Any other comments?
I just want to clarify, one thing as we move forward. So first of all, thank you all again for a wonderful evening of discussion, questions and suggestions. One of the things I want to reiterate as we go through this process is what the board is doing now is the board is saying, here are our expectations for the superintendent and the team, but primarily for the superintendent, which is your employee, around goals for what students should know and be able to do, and guardrails that honor the values of the district. How the superintendent accomplishes those is up to the superintendent and his team. So I want to make sure that that's, that's clear, that once these are established, the board will say, we're going to hold you accountable for accomplishing these, but how they go about doing it, how they go about measuring it, how they go about making sure that it occurs, is up to the superintendent and their team. So I just want to make sure, just kind of reiterate that in your minds as we go through the process. So thank you all for having us.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your time this evening. Thank you for having our invited guests earlier. I know that was really valuable to hear from other districts and larger districts than our own where this model is certainly coming to fruition and gives us something to look forward to. So I want to thank my peers for the robust conversation this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So it looks like it was motioned by Commissioner Santiago, seconded by Commissioner Griffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night, everyone.